Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. There's a lot of old people out there today. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everyone being here this morning. I'll now call the January the sixth meeting with the Natche County Commissioners to order at this time. It is customary for us to begin all of our meetings with a prayer and a pledge allegiance to the flag. Prayer is generally delivered by a sitting commissioner. During this time, we will ask you, you're welcome to stand and join us in this prayer. You're welcome to use this time for your own prayer if you like, or you're welcome to use it for a moment of silence, which would be appropriate. And I'll call on Mr. Bellfield, are you sitting and ready, Mr. Bellfield? He told me that you were always ready to pray, so I'm sure you're ready, sir.
Exactly.
But I'll call on Mr. Bellfield to lead us in indication this time, since Mr. Outlaw will lead us into the future. Thanks, Mr. Bellfield.
First of all, happy to be here, everyone.
Happy to be here.
Our Father in Heaven, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for our existence. We know your Son, Jesus, died on the cross for us all this while we exist today. We just thank you. Now, Father, as we, as the government of Nash County, begin the new year 2020, there are many challenges here in the county, challenges in the state, as well as the nation, and even the world. All power is in your hand, and we recognize that, Father. And we ask you to lead and guide us as we work through the challenges that face us, that we have great county government for the citizens of Nash County. Bless us as we go through this meeting. Bless us, we ask in your name. Amen.
Would you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're now on item four, which is the, uh, what about the many, uh, last month of December? During that month of December, we had a total of a whole deal on December 1st, our review of the special call we, with Natchawas, my school system, which was on December 11th. We had an emergency call we need on December 18th, and we had an expected call on December 23rd, like, oh, probably gonna be, wouldn't happen. But at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve these minutes or set any corrections or any comments that you may have on them or any questions before approval. I would like to approve the full settlement by Commissioner Outlaw and that's settled by Commissioner Ritz. Any questions on that? All in favor of that motion, let me know and say an aye. Any votes of all like, son. Minutes stand approved. I appreciate that. If there's no objection from the board, we have item number eight, which is employee services that we did meet in January. We have a number of law enforcement here today to get here 20-year recognition, 25-year recognition, 30-year recognition, and in one case, 35 years with Nash County. I'm going to have to fold objection if I would lose this item up in the agenda at this time. If everybody's okay with that, I just think, I think the board would appreciate showing the favor of that long-term service. It amazes me each year the number of people that we get that have 20, 30, 50, occasionally a 40-year recognition that they get. It just shows that the employees of Nash County are loyal. They do us a wonderful job, and usually they come from all departments. And at this time, I'd like to call on our Human Resource Director, Mr. Kirkland, to pick me up and hold and lead us into this presentation. And I want to ask you to tell us how you want to do your service.
Would y'all be able to help me?
We'll do anything you ask, sir. You want, if you have a little plan for it, you want, yes, okay.
As Commissioner Davis said, we do recognize employees each year for their years of service. And this year, we have 27 individuals that we need to recognize, and we'll call you up individually.
I remember saying last year, we needed practices before we got to that.
Okay, we'll start with our 20-year recipient, Mandy Bailey.
Mandy with our Health Department. Good morning, and congratulations, and thank you on behalf of the board.
Lori Boone with Environmental Health.
Congratulations, Mandy. You have a terrific job, I know you can all do that for the Department. Appreciate it. Morning, ma'am. Our happiest employees ever, that is always my office, for their service.
Tammy Jones from the Health Department. Tommy Lamb, Sheriff's Department.
Morning, Tom. I would like to thank you this morning. Appreciate your 20 years of service in the Sheriff's Department. Wish you had. Patty, thank you very much for your 20 years of service.
Jackie Mallory from Social Services.
Morning, ma'am. Thank you. Well, you've done a full, how many years your family got in service for the county of the Health? I would like you to add that. Appreciate you being here. So where are you, Bob?
Jackie Ritz, Sheriff's Department.
Morning, ma'am. Thank you very much for your service. I would say absolutely good, once that Sheriff's Office does all working in detention centers. So we certainly appreciate, uh, very much history, thinking detention centers, particularly at the last, you know, period times.
Stan Ritz, Sheriff's Department.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir.
See you. I'll be sent you a little later.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Joanna Robbins from the Health Department. She can be with us. Christina Rodriguez, Health Department. And Mr. Williams, Health Department. Okay, moving on to 25 years. Janet Austin from Social Services. Sherman Booth, Emergency Services.
Morning, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Sir.
Brian Fisher, DMS Communications.
Michael. Michael Brian. Thank you, sir. You will thank us for all our service, whatever.
Donna Long, Social Services.
Five years, all valid. Been a good time, that's right.
Sherri Parkinson, Sheriff's Department. Todd Wells from the Sheriff's Department, he won't be here, he's retired. Sharon Williams, Social Services. Jeremy World, Sheriff's Department.
Morning, sir. See? Thank you very much for your service.
Moving on to 30 years. Dorian Gaines from Sheriff's Department Detention Center.
Well, it's been a big day for you. Have you back up again in a little while. Thank you very much for your service there. I'm sure we'll miss you, I'm sure.
Debbie Duke, we have the Tax Department.
Hey, Debbie. So you're mad going great? Let your husband on the elevator, doesn't he?
Yes, Ron. He just, um, together, for these.
Yeah. Always do. We thank you for your service.
And 35 years with the Health Department, Sharon McCoy.
You got a good neck hook at home, my friend. So short and pretty, huh? It's one good time, right? What you saw there was right at 800 years of service with that, you know? I'm actually amazed every year when we have this little ceremony, it's very pleased this board, it is pleased it's board. But it is just amazing to me that each year we seem to have about the same number of getty stores, which means that Nash County is apparently a good place to work. And this board does all their things for all its employees, and we certainly appreciate everyone of them, every day. Sometimes, we know we're not doing enough, particularly a few years back, and things were just so tight, we were fighting rebound, but it will be very favorable. And we appreciate all of you sticking with us this year. We've been able to do a little more, a little more lately, and hopefully we can certainly continue to do that, and it just depends on the economy, like everything else. But about 800 years of service is amazing truth, uh, feat, I should say. And I just, on behalf of the board, greatly appreciate it. And if any board member wants to say anything, to do that, then I'd like to board stand up and give a walk for anyone else, Mr. Bellfield, I'm sure you'd like to say something.
Yes, I was a former employee of Nash County. I worked there six. It's a good place to work, and we've had some hard times, but we've worked through them. And I'm sure all these employees that received certificates today for the years of service, we appreciate it. And I know you're going to enjoy when you reach retirement, because I would enjoy every minute that I retire and then next year.
We don't want to talk about retirement yet, sir. Did you figure out far?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Someday, you're going to have to retire.
I hope that anyway.
So, and we, we hope that we are happy to retire, and we have people in mind to replace them that are very efficient and keep Nash County rolling.
Yes, sir. True it is. Any other position, we should make any comment, if not, put it on the clock. If not, we'll certainly stand and blah, blah, blah. I'll leave it up to Mr. Lamb. Bye, so you can return to work now if you stay with the, uh, Nash County. I'm going to move on now to item number five, which is public comment. Public comment is an area on our agenda each Thursday, Monday, that we meet in the morning. What that period is for in general is to give any citizen a chance to come before this post, and talk to us about anything you have on your mind. If indeed it's an item that's on the agenda at a later time, we would prefer that you wait until it comes up and speak then. I will say, just for clarity, if you're here to speak about anything concerning the Sheriff's Department Detention Center, I probably want you to do it under public comment now, rather than after the two agenda items, which are reports, that was in facility report and then operation report. But I think this would be the proper time to do that. Public hearing or anything else that's on the agenda, we would ask for you to wait to that period of time on the agenda. I did have a total of six people sign up this morning, and I will always take those in order that you signed up, and each one of them indicated that the topic would be about the detention center or either the Nash County Sheriff's Office. I appreciate each one of you on behalf of the board being here this morning. It's very important that we hear from our citizens, and it's very important that you let this board know what's on your mind. We do have a time limit of five minutes, we, uh, actual public comment policy, which, can we put that on the screen? Okay, it's on the screen, I'm not sure if you can read that. But just briefly, important thing, what it says is you have free five minutes. I'm glad, on behalf of the board, to give you the full five minutes, if we should take it this morning, since we have a number of signups, I would ask that you limit it to five minutes. And I think we have a time slot that will be on the screen now, so it's amazing what we're able to do with our new displays and technology in the boardroom, and I think we'd be grateful to be able to put that up there. Not to distract you, but you can keep your eye on where you're at. Also, I sincerely ask you to direct any comments that you have to the full board. I would refer and ask you, ask you not to direct it to any given board member, and just talk to it in general. We do not respond to public comments, majority of the time, it won't be this morning. We will have our facility report and operation report after this time period, and we invite you to stay and see those, which possibly may enlighten a little bit more about what's going on. But at this time, I will start with number one, which is for Pat Fordus, from Moire, North Carolina. I'd ask you to recite the name and use your address. Good morning, Mr. Ford.
Good morning, how are you all? My name's Patrick Fordus, and I live on Moire Way in Moire. I will keep my comments succinct, since we provided the, provided a timer, I don't need to set my clock up here. One month ago, I came in front of this board, and I addressed the fact that it costs $5,000 a day to house the inmates out of town. Now, I come back a month later, and we're $11,000 a day. Money's going to other counties, that's 3.96 million dollars a year, $330,000 a month. It seems to me the Sheriff's Office budget's been penalized for facilities and maintenance issues, and I'm fairly in question would other county departments be penalized for structural deficiencies. I know that budget cuts will have effects on the operations of the Sheriff's Department. How could they not? We have a fund balance, a ready day fund. I don't understand why those monies can't be utilized to make the required repairs to the Sheriff's Office Detention Facility. I was told that somebody commented that they were used to an Andy Griffith type of sheriff. Sheriff Stone's been a very close personal friend of mine for over years, both personally and professionally. I can assure you Sheriff Stone is not Andy Griffith, or not an inmate area, and Sheriff Stone pays close attention to details. Sheriff housed 15 to 18 federal inmates for five months, generated $167,000 in revenue for Nash County. I heard that was referred to as fool's gold, but I do understand that it's skin, like real gold. It seems to me that when Sheriff Stone became sheriff about five years ago, toured the jail, county officials were with him, along with Deputy Wordsworth, and they saw plumbing issues and faulty locks and drainage issues and rusted-out bars. I toured the jail last Friday, I saw the same thing. I saw more altar safety issues than I can mention right now. I'll be honest with you, I looked over there in those little one-man mental housing cells or whatever, I wouldn't let my dogs stay in there. Somebody told Deputy Wordsworth five years ago, and he was in there, and he didn't need to be in there because it wasn't safe. The state decides when inmates can be returned to the Nash County Jail, not county officials. The citizens of Nash County need to see why the jail was ordered closed, and let them see for themselves the renovations that have taken place. November's around the corner, perhaps the citizens need to vote on the issue that we're discussing, after they've been fully informed in a transparent note of the matter. Maybe we don't need to do that behind closed doors. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Dave.
Captain, relative, mister, pronounce your last name, you're next on the list, we'd be glad to hear from you this time. I'm sorry I showed a card that you didn't, if you do, we'd be grateful, we'll have that for that. Welcome, yeah.
Hello. My name is Catherine Joyce of Surkey, and I live in Nash County, in Rock Mountain District 7. After the board paid this bill to jail, I had taken it upon myself to do a little digging, not just myself, but for the citizens of our county. I find it quite embarrassing, for such a thriving county, that our jail is the only jail that has ever gotten a lift from the state of this magnitude, that it's nearly shut down our jail. The detention facility is the responsibility of the county, not the Sheriff's Office. The name on the building says Nash County Detention Facility. You all agree that given the age of the building, it is in good shape. With standing water, multiple electrical, mechanical, fire foot issues, panels with nearly every door locked, blow, chemical risk, and major plumbing problems, that's not in good shape. The hotels and log rooms that were shut down by this county was in better shape than this jail. The numbers stated in the special meeting will weigh off. Myself and friends, we can inspect our record in its entirety, and analyze each infection. In fact, 88 were facility-related, 6.8 operational, and 4.7 rest facility and operational. Some of the operational infections, such as security custody violations, are because of the flawed design of the jail. The design of the magistrate's office, all the way to the inmates' residence, was flawed and began. I personally toured the jail last week, and he said that dorms 1 through 3 have been totally renovated. Those dorms did not appear to be renovated, they all had non-working sinks, toilets, and showers, with filling plate amongst other issues, including many safety issues. I'd like to know when were they renovated, and how much was spent on that renovation? I was even more appalled when I saw the notorious fence. $75,000 was spent to repair it. The fence is still a safety liability, it was shabby work, and huge waste of funds. I was also made aware that y'all have not been aware of any problems in 2018, but our research found that there were work orders in 2016, and y'all were made aware in 2017 of the roof leaking, and many problems since that time. You also stated that over the last five years, that the Sheriff's Office had the largest budget increase than any department. Actually, emergency services have with an increase of $1.4 million. But again, this is not a county issue, this is a, this is not a Sheriff's Office issue, this is a county issue. Our jail staff is putting their lives on their line each day, and you guys really don't seem to care. I spoke to jailwets that have been there for about 20-plus years, and they all cite the same issues, from the safety, to the classification, to no lockdown areas, and being short-staffed. When there are 40 violent offenders housed, and missing their offenders, it just breeds problems. This still, the lockdown situation still will not be fixed with repairs that you are going. Every day, we are losing money, 4000 law fees, $11,000 a day to house inmates at other facilities, and $800 a week on recuperative truck because of the lack of attention to detail about facility maintenance. The cries of guilt not being answered by our commissioners, we are in deep trouble. What are you going to do, because it's costing us more than $463 an hour? Yesterday, a board member was quoted in the telegram that the money for this should not come from the taxpayers, because the taxpayers did not cause this. The taxpayers did not cause issues at the courthouse or this admin building, however, we have brand new ones. I will finish by saying, when our sheriff was running an election, I knew and understood, I knew that he understood the issues with gangs, guns, and drugs. He promised to be transparent, a working sheriff, and serve with honor, compassion, and diligence. He's lived up in his work, kept his promises and more. However, I feel that y'all have been very disrespectful, and I'm very disappointed in your actions. And could you even imagine having no Nash County Sheriff's Office, Sheriff's Office for one day? At the beginning of your speech, you mentioned a proverb, "Before you speak, let your words pass through these three gates." Is it true? Is it necessary? And is it kind? While I think the gates were broken, as some of the broken doors in the jail, I'll end with this. When solving problems, you need to dig at the roots instead of hacking at the leaves, and you cannot solve problems with the same reasons that was used to create them. I'm Captain Zoe Zoe, and I'm staying with our transparent Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, Captain. Captain, while you're here, I'd also have more like thinking, more things you can do while we're here, too. I know you do a lot, I appreciate it. Our next speaker is, uh, in the map. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. I'd like to say a pleasant good morning to the board members and all that is present here, wishing in every one of you a happy new year. And I'm jotted mine down, because I'm like those ever-ready backers, I just keep going and going. But I am here.
Oh, would you spell your name and address?
Oh, excuse me, you have to pull me a check, because I talk a lot. My name is Minister Edna Mount, and I am from West Haines, North Carolina, uh, West Haines Avenue. I am here to speak to the county manager and commissioners concerning the deployed condition of the jail, and at the same time, to defend Sheriff Keith Stone.
Amen.
Being a concerned citizen and a long resident of Nash County, born in the Mount Pleasant area. area, little over eighty-plus years ago, I must say, when I saw the news media and pictures, note, I said picture is worth a thousand words. I was angry. God gives everyone the right to be angry, but sin not. I have not sinned. To accuse Sheriff Stone of airing our dirty laundry is way beyond the pale. The condition of that jail did not start with Sheriff Stone. If I may, let me take you back into time. My mother babysit the late Sheriff Frank Brown way before I was born. After Sheriff Brown came Sheriff Jimmy Grimes, next Sheriff Dick Jenkins. I knew all three and now Sheriff Keystone, whom I got to know when he was campaigning for sheriff. I know all too well when being falsely accused, it's not a good feeling. I say this to this jail, I say this to you. This jail has been deteriorating down through the years. This is a very ugly stain on this county. It is really a chain reaction. The state allocated money to all one hundred counties. The question is, what is it used for in Nash County? Whoever is detained here are human beings. Never forget that. It is not fit for animal shelter. The county manager, commissioners do not lay this jail at Sheriff Stone's doorstep. Lay it at your feet and those before you. Now that the state has exposed you, I say you are caught with your pants down, just like the ostrich bird. When caught, he gets scared, he digs a hole and sticks his hand, head in the hole, but his behind is up in the air. He's trying to hide. And to everyone, so everyone can see it. So it is, so it is with Nash County. When the new park was being built a couple of years back, I asked, what is that being built for? I was told a new jail. Well, it's completed. Courts, offices and whatever else, and whatever else. Last for now question, as a group, did you all commissioners ever go over and survey and assess the damages and the condition of that jail? Before all this was brought to your attention, I would continue, but at this time I'm going to be here, thank you for your patience and your listening. Thank you. Thank you, Soapy.
Thank you, Mr. Mapp. I appreciate you being here this morning.
Thank you.
T.J. Walker. Welcome, Mr. Walker. I'd like to congratulate you on your new assignment, uh, happened back in October. Uh, welcome this morning, sir.
Thank you. Before my time starts, I would like to thank all of the county commissioners, uh, to the county manager. I would thank all of you for your service, uh, for your sacrifice. I know this is no easy task, so I thank all of you for your service and your sacrifices.
I, I will say, uh, Mr. Walker recently got elected to the Rockaway County Council where you wanted to, although you may not know that's part of the recipe.
No problem.
Your name and address, sir.
Thank you. T.J. Walker, six one six Starland Way, Rocky Mountain, North Carolina, two seven eight oh three. I stand here this morning, um, not on the side of our commissioners, not on the side of our sheriff, although I think I would be both, but I stand this morning in advocacy of our detention center officers. I had an opportunity to, uh, tour the county jail, and even before touring, I wrestled hearing this, uh, situation and this issue, I had to pray, I had to ponder, I had to really think, is this a matter in which I should voice my opinion? Well, one, I'm a citizen of Nash County. Two, I am now a newly elected city councilman of Rocky Mountain, and I believe that gives me the opportunity to voice and to advocate for our detention center officers that are citizens of Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. The condition of the jail, I had a situation in touring where, I was with several other officers and, uh, we were inside of a pod, and as we were going out to exit the pod, the door would not open. We stood at the door about eight seconds. Now, I don't want you to raise your hand and I don't want to ask, uh, I will ask, but this is a rhetorical question, of how many have ever toured the jail? How many have ever worked a shift for the detention center officer or have a shift? But I found myself at that door for eight seconds, inside of this pod with twenty-five plus inmates, and I began to think instantly how our detention center officers must feel day in and day out as they risk their lives, not only because it's the nature of their work, but knowing that we have insufficient safety in our county jail. I asked the question once we exited out and ended the tours, why in the world were we stuck at the door? And I was told that the control officer could not see us because of the structure and the blind spot that we have because of the structure of our jail. This is not a matter of our wants, this is not a matter of our personal interest or our personal desires, but this is a hard matter to be able to see what's best for our citizens. We have detention center officers that are citizens of Rocky Mountain, detention center officers that are employees of Nash County. And when we take our oath, and I remember this oath because I just took it, our oath states that we are to do to the best of our skill and to the best of our ability what is best for our citizens and in our office position. I spoke with my commissioner representative, I spoke with the sheriff, and speaking with my representative, I was told that the board has determined and decided that they would do whatever they had to do to not, to not to build a new jail, but to bring the jail up to state code. I have an issue with that because bringing the jail up to state code is saying, we'll do the bare minimum. We'll do the very least. We'll do what the state requires us to do to bring our jail up to state code. State code is the bare minimum. State code is not our best. State code is not providing the best for our detention center officers. We don't give the bare minimum in our marriages. We don't give the bare minimum in our line of duty of work. We don't give the bare minimum as public officials. We don't give the bare minimum even in life. And I just challenge us to dig deeply, search our hearts and make sure that we're doing the best to our skill, the best to our ability and the best to our knowledge for our citizens and for our citizens, and saying that we're giving them the best and not the bare minimum. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here this morning. You look forward to your service.
Yes, sir.
Next person on the, uh, final list is, uh, Daniel Rees.
Morning, Daniel. How's things going?
Yeah, it's a shame that I've been here a long time.
It'll be all right.
My name is Daniel Rees. I'm from Nash County. I live at forty-seven seven one Earl Road, and I'm here because I'm here on promise. I had the chance to visit my brother, my son in Nash County Jail, and he come out and put his socks in their socks. I said, where are your socks at? He said, well, we're walking in the morning. And I started to get worried. And I said, well, that'd be horrible. They said, well, don't even do it for him. They're not going to do nothing about it. And I said, why? The commissioners not learn what's going on? He said, I don't know, but we're probably saying, we don't want to be in trouble. I said, well, I look at this, but if they don't know, they wouldn't be able to do anything about it. But I make bold home of promise that I will count and speak my case. If I have commissioners, each and every one of them, toured the jail, don't you have the right to tour the jail? Do you not have someone in this county that's in charge of taking and doing something about that detention center? Because it's a shame that dogs believe better than me and when we're detained in that city. Dogs don't talk in war all the time, yet they're going to carry on. Sheriff Stone cared about these people. That's why he went a higher up than you are. So I think it's time that something will be done by the detention. There's something on the town that I think needs to be known. That's what I have to say.
I appreciate you being here this morning. My last person to sign up to speak this morning is, uh, Wayne Joyner.
Morning, Mr. Joyner. Good morning. Um, I come, my name is Wayne Joyner. I live at one one five two two Red Bull Road, Fatsdale, North Carolina. And I had a way to come in this morning because I am a current employee of the Nash County Sheriff's Office. I am in charge of civil process now, but I started to work at Nash County Sheriff's Office in nineteen ninety-four. I've had the privilege and honor of working for four different sheriffs now. Um, I wanted, forward to realize, I don't want to get in the middle of what's going on, but I felt like from my heart, that's why I don't, you don't see the notes, I, I took the men and women that lie on my train, the detention center. I was started down there for over ten years. Um, since I started on in nineteen ninety-four before the new dorms were built, the dormitory was the old jail, and it had been there, I guess, since the sixties or seventies. Um, there was water on the floor then, pipes were messed up. Um, we've had numerous escapes, two, I know of at least two, this was before Sheriff Stone, so the escapes were just, uh, we had two riots while we were there. The news media just did get a hold of the, to the situations in the jail, in the detention center at that time. Um, one of the best administrators we had was fired because the new annex, once it was built, there was moldy on the showers, but the shower was not even, there was sent their piece of the center lock just like the outside of the wall is, so there's, there's no tile, there's nothing, even when you give the inmates the, the, um, materials to clean them, I mean, it's just like a center lock. There's nothing, there's no tile, there's no aluminum, nothing, when you get in that shower for forty inmates to get in. Um, I asked a question because I saw a safety issue from the beginning about the dormitories that they built over there where it's, at that time, there was, they had to house forty men at a time. When you go through those two doors, you're, you're on the, of forty men. And we all know that society has changed and even then we had our issues, but the most secure area of the jail was built in the sixties and seventies. There's something, oh, it's the town drunk and, uh, and major area would come in and lock itself up in. And time has changed, inmates then, the culture has changed, law enforcement can't do a lot of things that they used to do now, not allowed to be done. Inmates, when they come in, even though they had committed a crime, if you treated them with respect, they treated you with respect. But now, some, a lot of that's out the window. And the most secure areas then, there's the bars that were built in the sixties, inmates throw feces on you, they do all these things, and these detention officers, I talked to a lot of them still, and they said, it's all a guy, I don't know how much more I can take. Um, and, and I know that pay is an issue, but a lot of it is the facility. And I really believe that the county commissioners, they could walk a mile in their shoes, as the old saying is, if you go over there and work a week, you, you would be back over here trying to figure out how to build a new jail because the facilities that we have over there now are not stable, that's also all the inmates, and now, you never heard about drive-by shootings, that's how much, you know, now it's a daily occurrence, a daily occurrence. And where do you think a lot of these people, when they get caught, and I'm not saying they're all guilty, but when they get put in, they get put in the detention center, that's where they're going to. And if they don't care about no more than anything than the shooting in the house and don't care who they hit, what do you think's going to happen when they get over there? They can say real quick, the inmates will say, what you going to do to me? I'm locked up. I've even had detention officers tell me to game them and say, I know where you live, I'll get you. And, you know, that, that was, you might have heard that even then in the back in the nineties or even in the early two thousands, but it's really getting bad and you just turn on the news and you see what's happening. And so these people are being held somewhere, so when they get in there now and there are games, and there's twenty-five or thirty in a dormitory that, that's the most secure lockdown area we have now because of those bars over there, um, where they can reach out and grab you and throw different things on you and stuff like that. I just, I just challenged commissioners this morning to, to walk a mile in their shoes. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joyner, I appreciate your comments and, and Turk appreciates, uh, we have a long time to serve in that county.
That's what you were doing there.
Moving on to, uh, item number six, we're going to have, uh, two reports that we will be doing each month now concerning the, uh, detention center. First, we'll have one by our facility, uh, on facilities only, uh, and that will be of Mr. Johnson, and then we will have one by the sheriff department, uh, by, uh, Keystone, our sheriff, uh, and it will be on operations only. And we are doing this because our board has decided that we really didn't need to work at this together. We need to work at it in a public venue, and this is the start of trying to do that. Prior recall, though, Mr. Boone, I want to make one comment, a critical mistake that I made, uh, on twenty-third of December, which was our special call meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, and if you looked at the tape, I'm sure some of you have made a thing, uh, already, but at three minutes and thirty-five seconds, I was talking as I stood over there about, uh, doing things like that, it's not something that I personally enjoy doing. I'm not a person that likes to be out and bumping too much. I struggle with it and, uh, I would much for, and what I said that morning was, I prefer to do it in the back room. Very poor choice of words. What I meant to say was, I prefer to do it in the background. I think if you were asked by media that follows us, they would agree that, uh, our board follows the open media law very well. Uh, we strive to do that. I will say this is the first meeting that we have streamed live, this is something all our board devoted to do, and hopefully we'll be able to actually show it live on Channel Nineteen moving forward. We're not there quite yet, but certainly it's been streamed live. But I would apologize to my board, uh, or our, I've got quick use of the word my, too, that's another thing. I had somebody to recruit, to teach my talking that morning, and believe me, they gave me a lot of this thing that I did wrong, uh, using the word my board did to operate our board. And it's very hard to stop that with your chair, so, but I do intend to stop it. But the other thing is, that word, back room, was a very, very, uh, poor choice of word, and I would apologize this morning to the public and particularly our board for using that, and I meant to say background, and if I say it again, call me out at the time and I will change quickly to background. So with that said, I'm going to move on to item number six.
Sheriff. I need to make a comment right now.
Okay, sir.
Oh, I'm a, I'm a kind of facts and figures kind of guy, and I, and I claim to be a common sense person. Uh, we, there's no conflict anywhere in us knowing that we've got to do something to the jail. We have hired, uh, engineering firm to come in, evaluate the jail, look at, see what we need to do, uh, what we need to renovate, where we need to add on to it, where we need to add on, renovate, or if that don't work, you know, we may have to boot it to. But until we get facts and figures to tell us what to do, advise us what to do from engineering firm, then we, we can't, we, we shouldn't, we can't say what we're going to do till we get the figures together and the facts. We know, this whole board knows, there's a lot, there's a lot of problems in the jail and we know we're going to fix it. Uh, but for now, I assume the problem is that we've got to get these people back in this jail. We can't pay eleven thousand dollars a day or whatever it comes out to be, you know, as the gentleman said, what a good, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars a month, four million dollars a year, we can't do that. But the crazy thing is, we got to keep putting band-aids on the jail until, and get these people back in here until we can do. people back in here until we can, to, wait, this is a slow process of government, takes a while to get, but when we get the facts and the figures, then we're committed to move ahead and do what we're gonna do. And I just wanted to say that because we're working on it.
Thanks for coming, and our board finally gives us these two reports. If commissioner wants to comment on anything, we would love to let you know, but thank you for your work, you've gone, say it very well. Uh, at this time, I will call on, uh, Jonathan Boone, who is our county engineer and facility director, to give us an update on actually where the county is as it relates to facilities. Now, I think Mr. Boone is going, in his presentation, try to get the, uh, public to better understand what is facilities and what is operation in his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, fellow commissioners, appreciate you having me here this morning. I would say that I'm in front of a crowd quite this large, uh, but appreciate you having me here. I see I'm not limited to five minutes, I think I'm gonna need more than that, so please bear with me. Um, I would like to say before I get started, the, uh, the information I want to share with you today regarding work at the jail, progress at the jail, is a result of the work of our people, part of work of our people. Certainly employees in my department, in both U2 facilities, both in the field, administration, and a number of contractors that are currently working at the jail as we speak. So I just want to acknowledge that, uh, everything I showed you today is a result of their work. Uh, and the next thing I would like to say is, my presentation is focused on the existing physical plant, the existing footprint that we have, the existing building that we have, uh, it will not be directed towards, as, as Commissioner Conley referred to, uh, the work that is underway by mostly architects and future improvements, it is strictly looking at the infrastructure that we have across the street at the jail. I'll just sort that out. I forgot, I'm a little bit used to this. Jonathan, is it written behind the sign, Jonathan, I'm our boy. Thank you. All right, so again, I would like to share with you some of the work at the jail, but before I do that, I'd like to, this might be a challenge, I apologize for that. First, I'd like to talk a little bit about the funds that were programmed in 2020 for improvements at the facility. Uh, as you're aware, uh, the county commissioner approved, uh, a little over five hundred fifty thousand dollars, uh, for capital improvements at the jail, that actually began in late FY nineteen, I believe it's in May, uh, with about fifty, fifty-six thousand dollars in the balance, so that those funds were appropriated in 2020. And I'll talk a little bit about that. Uh, second item, uh, commissioner's also, uh, currently, roughly a hundred and twelve thousand dollars for some improvements, plumbing related improvements in the older section of the jail, was mentioned earlier. Uh, the oldest section of the jail was built in the late nineteen seventies. There was some record to the sixties that was built in the late nineteen seventies, nineteen seventy-seven, did some things that I reviewed. Uh, and finally to mention, again, in the FY twenty twenty capital budget, uh, the commissioner approved a hundred thirty thousand dollars to modernize, uh, an elevator in the sheriff's office, uh, that also dates back to the nineteen seventies, that would be going in, and I'll talk a little bit more about that, renovate the cab and the mechanical elements associated with the elevator. And I apologize for this being small, uh, maybe you're trying to indicate where we are, uh, you can say, you can see, uh, in my spreadsheet, I'm an engineer, I love numbers, uh, as the commissioner Conley referred to facts, I like numbers, uh, we have seven buckets there identified, one is renovation to the dorm, we'll talk a little bit more about that, compliance, uh, that would be addressing any issues flagged by the Department of Health and Human Services during their semi-inbound inspections, uh, the fencing improvements were referenced earlier, uh, some work to the A P A C systems, some lighting improvements, uh, ball repairs, and that's in the older section of the jail, and then, uh, we've got that catch-all bucket referred to as oven. As you can see there, as we say today, uh, to date, we have, uh, spent, uh, roughly a hundred and thirty-six thousand, around that number, four hundred dollars on improvements at the jail, capital improvements, I'll show you some pictures of some of those. Uh, the, um, the county has committed, uh, to an additional two hundred and eleven thousand five hundred dollars, uh, for additional cash, capital improvements at the jail, uh, and that brings us to a total of, again, round numbers, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the five hundred fifty thousand program, full capital for the existing facility, existing infrastructure, uh, at the Nash County Jail. And here, here are some photos that I have here, these are photos taken in dorms, uh, one, two, and three, uh, they're more or less identical, their shapes are a little different, uh, but the infrastructure is the same. Uh, and the things that I'll point out here is, at that time, there was a lot concerned about showers, uh, one of the previous, um, speakers mentioned, uh, bare sunblock wall in the showers, you can see that in that photo just far left, uh, and they're based for five showers, and each of those were referred to as pods, they're also referred to as dorms, dorms one, two, and three, house for your inmates, five showers, five toilets, five sinks. In the little photo, you can see the commodes, they've got a sunblock wall in between those, uh, and then you'll see the shower on the shower, which has more paint than less, and that's after work, some work had been done to renovate that shower. Uh, after the inmate escape, uh, I believe the last one was in May, uh, inmates were taken off-site at that time, a decision was made, going and focused on, uh, some work that needed to be done in those dorms, and that's time to do that was when those dorms were back. Uh, so, again, do some photos that were taken after they were removed, and the full work began. Here's an after photo here, um, a lot of work, we did progress, but before complete, and again, the title on slide does say renovations, uh, again, I'm just pointing to the work that was done at that time, and the same renovations, primarily looking at some of the fixtures, uh, in the showers, uh, that needed some attention, um, the, uh, the painting on the walls and in the showers, uh, and they were renovated based on some, um, uh, recommendation that we received in the state, uh, based on materials used in another jail in the western part of the state, uh, and then we re-apothecated for, so that shower forward not worked, uh, it is apothecy, uh, that was placed on the floor, uh, prior to reinstalling bunks. Uh, this work was completed this summer. Sorry, I'm going backwards, let me go forwards. Uh, here's the same, uh, dorm, dorm one, pod one, uh, showing, uh, a picture after these bunks were installed, uh, we'll point out that you'll see in this dorm, uh, prior to the renovations or work this summer, uh, that dorm house forty inmates, uh, the sheriff's department, uh, made the decision, uh, this summer to cut the bunks, uh, to reduce the population in the dorm, which is concerned they have security related operation concerns, which may be addressed later, uh, this morning in the presentation. Uh, but you'll see there, those bunks are single bunks, and now the, uh, capacity of that dorm, uh, with the existing picture, is twenty inmates, that would be twenty bunks. And this is just showing that, again, same child, same, um, same everything in that dorm, it was repainted, uh, fixtures, um, addressed, and all of them were redone. I'm going backwards, I'm sorry. Here's a photo of dorm two, I believe, this, you can see the double box there, but you'll see, you'll see, again, based on the same stuff, or work in the showers, sorry, I'll have a closer to the shadow, and I'll have a little bit later, uh, but you'll see the dorms generally apothecy, then also the bunks were painted, uh, and resecure to the wall. All these photos that I showed, the first three photos were taken back this summer, ladies and gentlemen, maybe early August. Uh, the next set of photos is, uh, photos taken dorm two, uh, these photos were taken late last month, uh, after inmates were taken off-site again, uh, as a result of the letter the county received on December eighteenth, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. But again, this is not a photo that was taken back this summer, this is a photo that was taken within the last two weeks. Uh, this is dorm two, uh, this is dorm three. I will point out, uh, actually the photo on the right, uh, is maybe not all that impressive, uh, but what you see there is, uh, I believe trustees or inmates at the jail when the work was done this summer, uh, on the far right is the makeup phones that are provided to the inmates, uh, called outside of the facility, and trustees were used, they painted a darker colored paint, when they're calling around the phones, and when those inmates put their hands on the wall, uh, all the other walls are white color, and as inmates are on the phone, they tend to scratch that paint, and, uh, whatever paint were used by the trustees at the time, I would say, it adhered on that wall, and that's been scratched off. But behind that, uh, dark paint is the lighter colored paint that was also applied to the wall at that time. There's some discussion about the fencing upgrades, uh, so what I have here is pictures, three pictures that were taken back again this summer, uh, after the, uh, second inmate escape, and what I will attempt to draw your attention to, we use this cursor here, uh, is that you can see, uh, a lumber, the fence, basically the fence fabric was unsecured other than a piece of wire that ran from each vertical post to post. This is the corner, uh, where prior to the work that was done, uh, in the photos that I've shown you next, uh, because the dorms are high ceiling, the lighting, uh, is in the ceiling, uh, scissors lift is required, uh, access those light fixtures, and prior to the work done this summer, uh, for better or worse, uh, the way, uh, so the inmates staff or contractors had access to the dorms, that had entered the rear of the jail, uh, we had a fencing contractor that would come in, that, uh, there was seen this fence fabric here, and you'll see it opening here at the top, uh, they would pull this fence fabric back, scissors lift would come in, they would resecure the fence fabric, the work would be done, fencing contractor would open the fence fabric again, scissors lift would be taken out of the facility, it would be resecure. Honestly, not the most ideal way to handle that, but that was the way that the facility was constructed or designed in nineteen ninety-seven, constructed in nineteen ninety-eight. So that was the existing condition as of this summer. The second item, uh, the first inmate escape, which I believe was in March, passed through this very corner, uh, they had breached the fence fabric on scene, uh, after they exited through the fence, uh, they, all they had to do was basically make it over an eight-foot tall gate, so this is the top here, this is the gate, all they had to do was basically step on horizontal member of the gate, uh, and they were, they were home free. So this is the condition on the recreation yard, dorms one, two, and three, as of this summer. So basically, uh, the escapes that occurred, the second escape within May, I guess I should say, again, I may have pointed, pointing out, the fence fabric here, unsecured at the bottom, uh, I can only report what I was told, I, I was not part of the investigation, certainly do not know this, other than welcome to share with me, is that the inmate was able to pass underneath the fence fabric. Sheriff's Office may be the accident big devil about that, but he passed underneath the fence fabric, that's an unfortunate one for that. So what you'll see here is the work that was done, that is roughly two hundred and twenty feet linear feet of fencing at the jail, a hundred and thirty feet in the second, what we're looking at right now, outside dorms one, two, and three, about ninety feet outside of the, uh, linear feet outside of the lockdown dorm, and we'll talk a little bit more about that, also during my presentation. And what you'll see here, we've got several photos, this is a photo outside of the recreation yard, so we're looking at the area where the officers would, um, basically, uh, use to, uh, secure the perimeter of the facility, check for contraband, things that the detention officer would do routinely, uh, but we're on the outside and to the right, so on the outside of the fence would be where the inmates would have. And what you see here is a six-inch steel, one-quarter inch galvanized plate, runs the entire perimeter of the exercise yard, that is on the exterior, so it would go through the area where the detention officers would, um, secure the perimeter. This is a picture from inside the recreation yard, and what we see here is a six-inch tall, two-inch deep steel tube, one-quarter inch thick, uh, and it, it's, it's got some heft to it, I, I actually did have, I didn't try to pick one up, and, uh, once I laid hands on it, I decided, uh, it's probably better that I not do that, uh, because it is fairly substantial. Uh, but that valve was added between each of the vertical supports in the, on the inside of the recreation yard, and then fasteners passed through these, these, this steel tube and back into this steel plate, which I mentioned. So you remember the, the whole photo I showed you, there was basically very little, uh, the very little structural integrity, if you will, at the base of that fence fabric, up through the summer of nineteen ninety-nine, uh, now with the, uh, steel tube added on the inside, the steel plate added on the outside, on the entire perimeter of the facility, uh, I dare say an inmate would have a better chance of breaching the concrete in that exercise yard than to pass underneath that fence fabric again. Uh, that, that issue, at least as it relates to the fence fabric, has been addressed, the ability to make the pass underneath the fencing. Here's some other photos, I mentioned that, uh, here are four, an eight-foot gate, uh, there are local gates, uh, at the rear facility, this would actually be the second gate, uh, those inmates had to, had to pass over, uh, earlier this year, and you can see that that gate has been extended all the way to the roof, um, so for, an inmate to come out of the recreation yard, through the fence, and however they do that, uh, they had to pass through two gates, roughly ten feet tall, uh, to access the, uh, to, to escape from the jail. And, and hopefully, if there were, and, you know, maybe getting into an operation over a little bit, uh, but if an inmate were to, uh, to breach the recreation yard, there would be two means of dependence, hopefully to slow them down, uh, to provide detention officers adequate time to respond, uh, intercept the inmates, uh, if there were to be escape from the recreation yard. But this, this was also work completed this summer. Here are more photos, again, that basically show that, showed before. The other right I mentioned to you, uh, before, uh, to access the facility, uh, with scissors lift, they had to, uh, have a fencing contractor come in and peel the fence fabric back, you will see, uh, what we have added is a steel door through a masonry wall outside of dorms one, two, and three, uh, now that we no longer will have to, uh, open the fence fabric to enter the facility, we have a door that's dedicated, uh, for access to the facility, uh, so that we will not, um, compromise, if you will, uh, the fencing around the recreation yard. And the photo you see here on the left is from inside the recreation yard, uh, the photo you see on the right is on the exterior, so this will be, you know, a passage, a concrete passage outside the recreation yard where the detention officer would pass, uh, out of there, I was doing there. So, let's see, I'm sorry, need to go back real quick, we're talking about this capital items. So that leads, uh, two, two, uh, two of the elements addressed in actual expenditures in the dorm renovations you referred to, was about twenty thousand dollars, uh, basically the county's expense was to buy the material and to rent the equipment, uh, the work itself, uh, actually was completed by trustees or by inmates, uh, in the facility, so there is not any, and for any cost of labor, uh, and that was to the defense about twenty thousand dollars. Uh, and then the fencing, uh, this is only showing the number, uh, record story of seven five, that number actually is more or less correct, uh, this number here is not included tax, which I've come a little bit here and found, but the total debt of that is seven five, but that is a majority of the hundred thirty-six thousand, four hundred thousand, four hundred dollars spent today. As far as dollars committed, uh, I'll show you some pictures, you should see twenty thousand and twenty-nine, sorry, twenty-nine thousand dollars committed for additional room renovations, uh, and, um, that work, I'll show you some pictures of that here in a second, and then a one hundred eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars for additional security enhancements at the jail. Uh, there was a reference earlier to blind spots in the facility, that's concerned the sheriff's office had brought forward, uh, previously, uh, and, uh, I assisted the sheriff's department, we developed a schedule work, we did that project, if you recall, the county commissioner awarded that contract, uh, we in turn took that information, forwarded to the state, uh, basically, any significant improvements of that magnitude require approval of protocol to the Department of Health and Human Services, uh, we just received a notification then back on the, to December seventeenth, uh, that they have reviewed and approved our settlement, and, uh, we are scheduled, when I say we, I mean myself and representatives from sheriff's office, are scheduled to meet, uh, with vendor job controls, uh, tomorrow morning, actually, uh, to review our plans moving forward. I will say that the current action taken at the jail, decopulation, may change our plans a little bit in terms of the schedule work, uh, but, uh, as envisioned, back But as envisioned back earlier this year, and approved by the Commissioner of the State, that was a comprehensive project, touched all segments, all sectors of the jail. With current decopulation, we may scale that back a little bit in the day. So that, that number may not be, at least initially, the full $182,500. But my intent of sharing this with you, this is the proposal we received, and the proposal that the Commissioner acted on earlier this year, and the Department of Health and Human Services have now approved. The second item I mentioned, plumbing improvements at the jail was approved as part of the capital budget for 2020. Got a photo here that was referenced to the plumbing in the jail, plumbing checks. The work approved was the work on what I refer to, I think the condo referred to, the north-south block and the oldest section of the jail built in the late 1970s. And planes take 77, I believe, the facility was built, opened in 78, 79. And this will be the plumbing check between the north blocks. The inmates would be housed on the other side of this wall here, the steel panel. That will be a north block. And to our right, it will be another wall, inmates would be housed on the other side. So this is a utility access, this is not anything accessible to inmates. I would say that this is a indicative of plumbing that dates back to the 1970s. There's nothing, I would say, particularly remarkable about plumbing checks. It is an access for staff or facility maintenance. Could it stand to be renovated? Yes, it could, which is why the project was approved in the FY 2020 budget. But that work has yet to be done, primarily because of the conversations we've had with the state and really not knowing where things were headed with this older portion of the jail and the work of most of the architects as part of their needs assessment. So to this point, we have held off on making that investment plumbing in this section of the jail. If inmates were there, is serviceable? Do issues come up? Absolutely, they come up. I've got plumbing issues at my house today, and it's 10 years old. Now, we'll say certainly, just due to the nature of the jail, it promptly gets a little more wear and tear than plumbing fix should do in my house. But it is serviceable. But we do routinely get work orders. I'm not going to say we don't, we ask what we do, and of course, we're working to show you that. But the next item I will point out to you, the photo on the right, this was work completed prior to my arrival in February 2019. Work had been completed in the east-west block of the jail, and this is in the upper section of the jail. But once renovated, this is what this would look like. You still see some of the older vent pipes, things of that nature. But these are the pictures that were provided in order to the combination sink commotes in those ceilings. And this work had been completed. So if and when we were moved forward, this before condition would turn into a picture that looks much like its after condition in the east-west block. Third item I mentioned is the modernization, is really the term that the building's already proposed work on the elevator at the Sheriff's Office. You'll see Commissioners approved a premier budget. We had a premier budget of $130,000. We had a proposal to do that work. And I'm not sure what happened to my photo. But that's work that is pending. We have a proposal from our contractor vendor that we use for our elevator maintenance, decent front. Current numbers are somewhere in the 96 to $104,000. We'll come in and invite it there. That is work yet to be completed in the Sheriff's Office. And basically, what they will do is renovate the cab on the elevator, and construct in the late 70s, and replace the hydraulic and operational components in that elevator. There had been some issues with that elevator room, and get out front of that before we actually lose, lose the elevator to long-term damages. So that's kind of a review of the improvements that Commissioners had funded previously and also as part of the FY 2020 budget. The next portion of my presentation will focus on the compliance-related items that were brought to the attention of the County back on the 18th of December. This was the result of the semi-annual inspection that was completed on December 10th. By noting semi-annual inspection, that is to say, we are inspected at least twice. And I'm saying we did not see more than, we certainly came and we have this past calendar year. But we are inspected at least twice. First inspection this year was on May 10th, I believe it was. Second inspection, December 10th. And at that time, there were several items that were identified by the state. And they came in on the 10th. Typically, we would have one or two representatives from the state. And I say typically, that's based on what I'm told, you know, just during the panel in February 2019. Particularly, that would be one or two representatives from the state. In December, I believe, we had five representatives. So it was a very thorough inspection. And you will see some of the items represented on the board. They went through the facility, suited us. And it addressed everything from operational elements to physical planning. And it was looking at the existing infrastructure. As a result of that inspection, there were several items that the state felt needed of attention in the near term. And I will highlight some of those items immediately. I believe it's on English that was used in the letter. And then some items that needed to be addressed within 30 days of receiving the letter. And then the letter goes on to say, the other items flagged in the semi-annual inspection on the 10th need to be addressed primarily for the next 60 days. But I'm going to focus on the items in the letter on the 18th, either immediate items or items that needed to be addressed after 30 days. So if we look to those items, they are enumerated in subsection C of that letter. I believe, maybe the Commissioners have received a copy of that previously, I have not received a copy of that yet. But there were 15 items that the state felt needed immediate attention. And there were some deadlines associated with those that varied. But again, they wanted to see progress on these items post haste. That day, we're not, it's soon enough for them. And wanted us to address these items. You can see 15 items in subsection C. I have highlighted the items that relate to the facility or some aspect of the facility, or items that fall under the purview of the public utilities and facilities department. And remaining, at least in subsection C, were operational elements. So the first item we come to, you see highlighted there, item one, smoke evacuation system. When the state was on site on the 10th, when the inspectors asked, could he access the roof? And while on the roof, there was some discussion with someone about that, I don't believe, maybe members of the Sheriff's Office, about the equipment on the roof, part of which, in a newer section of the jail, the section constructed in 1998, designed in 1997, was a smoke evacuation system. And honestly, there was some confusion about what elements on the roof were associated with a smoke evacuation system. And at that time, staff indicated that were several of the fans, actually exhaust fans, what we learned, that either were non-operable or had damaged belts or broken belts that needed to be replaced with exhaust fans. They were not related to the smoke purge fans. And to give you an idea of what a smoke purge fan looked like, this is a photo of the roof over dorms one, two, and three, or pod one, two, and three, that's a known question we'll use. And these larger fans here, on the right, is one of the smoke purge fans. And these fans were operational 18th, as a result of the letter, or were operational 10th, I'm sorry. But as a result of the letter received on the 18th, were re-inspected on the 21st, Saturday, December 21st, with the assistance of the third-party vendor, of a mechanical contractor, and Synplex Bernal, who is a vendor that installs, maintains, and expects the fire panel at the facilities. But these, these were the fans that were in question. And basically, the function of these fans, that if there were to be a fire in the facility, these fans would be activated, and they would pull smoke, they would pull smoke out of the dorms. Most, certainly, sure, you know, and problemless of the individual tenants today, know that most deaths related to fires are not fire themselves, they are smoke. So this is an important feature in the facility. There are six smoke purge fans, one in dorm one, one in dorm two, one in dorm three, two in the lockdown dorm, only to have females, currently have males, and one is commensurate with the six of those fans. And the state wanted us to approve them with the assistance of a third-party vendor, that those fans will fully operate. And we did do that on Saturday, December 4th, and was providing state documentation out of that. But that was the first item that was referenced in the letter, received on the 18th. It was of great concern to the state that we address that item post haste. This is a letter here, don't necessarily, didn't mean to draw attention to the local contractor, but this is a local mechanical contractor we used in conjunction with the inspection on the 21st, when Synplex Bernal was here to inspect the fire panel, to verify operation of those smoke purge fans. My eyes are starting to fail me, but if we look to the next four items, items two, three, four, and five, two referred to supervision inmates, that's the operational item. Three, repair or lock, structure, different open access doors. That is an item that falls under the purview of Sheriff's Office, or the Assistant of that, if requested. And I'll touch on that later. Repair or replace non-functioning 2A communication. Again, that is an item that Sheriff's Office or detention facility makes. An item filed with 3D patents on the individual ceiling. It has also been an item that detention facility makes. That is another item that falls under the purview of the Public Utilities and Facilities Maintenance Department. One item was announced before, and we're done today. So that brings me to the next item on the list in subsection C of item six. So that would be the second of four items out of those 15 that apply to the physical plan for the building itself. And the state asked that there were two fire alarms, AD units, audio visual units, to be installed and checked and proper operation. These are two strokes in, two of the dorms that were damaged by inmates. Those were items that were known to staff and had already been referred to Synplex Bernal. They had been on site, they had inspected those units, they had ordered their replacement. And they were actually, we were actually, those units to be received. And then Synplex Bernal came back and reinstated. And that was done, I believe that was a Monday of Christmas, that was the 23rd. And that was an item that was known to us. And we waited on the vendor to receive the parts to complete those repairs. But that is what that item referred to. Item seven, correct status of locking system and control room panel. I believe there was some reference that earlier, again, that falls under the purview of the detention facility, non-facility maintenance. Item eight, old metal bunks out of the recreation yard, blocking gates, including safety hazard. Those were items that were placed in the recreation yard by individual other facility maintenance staffs. So that fell underneath the purview of the Sheriff's, or excuse me, detention facility. And item nine, identification of entirely new manual key system on security doors and fire extinguisher cabinets. There's some previous comments about delays in opening doors. But we'll say anything related to doors or locks in the facility follows the purview of the detention facility staff. That is a security issue. That is not an item that the facility management staff has involved in the cause of the nature of those doors and locks. And when the assist, if needed to the degree we can, typically, the Sheriff's Office will coordinate that work. I keep saying Sheriff's Office, maybe I should say, will coordinate that work and outside vendor. That brings us to item nine. Item 10, a couple of exit signs, three or four, that were not functioning at the time of the inspection on December 10th. And primarily as a result of inmate damage. And those were corrected within a couple of days of receiving the letter, actually, the next day, on the 19th. Item 11, fire extinguishers charged and ready for use, that is something that detention facilities have for days. Item 12, again, this is part of the life safety system, one of the most important aspects at the jail. We talked about smoke purge fans. This will, they would probably be a close second. But the first line of the fence is the fire control panel. Again, that is a system I mentioned was installed by Synplex Bernal. It's maintained and inspected by Synplex Bernal. And we had had an issue with a secondary panel associated with the fire, associated with the fire control panel at the entrance to the facility. So this would be the first element that the fire department would sue. When they come in to the facility, should they be responding to a fire call? That is a photo on the right. So if you've ever been to the mattress office, and seen you come in the door, and you look to the right, there's an issue with this anunciator panel here. It was causing a ground fault at the main fire panel, which was, I've got a photo here, the main control room of the facility. And the folks from the Department of Health and Human Services had some concerns that that ground fault may have a long-term negative impact on the fire panel and control system. So as a result of that, we've already, we've had, that system has been inspected a minimum angle. And Synplex Bernal's schedule will be on site the first week of January to inspect the fire panel. But the state asked for us to provide documentation, again, from a third-party, not from staff, whether that facility is maintenance or detention facility, that that system was fully operational. And again, based on our request, we were able to accelerate that timetable. Synplex Bernal came in on December 21st, and then say that we had already the chemical company inspected the fire panel and was fully operational. I would say the fire panel had been inspected by our EMS staff prior to that in the presence of the representative from the Department of Health and Human Services. But they, they wanted documentation from a third-party. And I probably got the small print, probably not that important to you. But this is the document, a portion of it, that Synplex Bernal provided to us. The data inspection between first certifying that the fire panel was fully operational and operating and has designed. So again, that's the fourth item on our list, or item 12, about 15. Item 13, providing thorough searches of inmate history, don't forget all that. That is, was an operational item, not facility maintenance, full team, new inmates to be located in medical area. I believe it's a reference that early, that is an operational item. Item 15, remove combustible material in the basement, electrical rooms, can't avoid several. And that is an operational element, so that was an item that the detention facility had believed to be there. So those were the items that the state had flagged needing immediate attention. And all the items that are related to the facility's maintenance were either addressed on the 19th, that's a day after the letter was received, or three days later. When we had to arrange and strongly, maybe strongly encourage, to be a better way to phrase that, our vendor that inspects our fire panel would come in. And we actually, we paid in the emergency rate, we didn't get them to come in that Saturday, 21st, so we could provide the documentation that state required. Those, those are the four items of those 15 that related to facility maintenance and were addressed as requested by the state. The second set of items, section D, how many do I have on my tab? Past five minutes, right?
You've been through it, I believe, in a month. I'm sorry, you've been through it, you can go ahead.
I'm starting to lose you, 30 minutes. Section D, these were the items that the state requested that we've been addressing in the next 30 days after receiving the letter on the 18th. You'll see there are 10 items, items highlighted, again, I've used yellow, or items that relate more specifically to physical plate related items. The items highlighted in green, two of the 10, are items that have some responsibility in facility maintenance, some responsibility with detention facility, I'll go through that quickly. First item again, when the inspector was here on the 10th, asked to access the roof, there were no location on the roof that concerned him due to either broken conduit or somebody exposed with doubers. You will see that as item one. I have a picture of one of those items. This is an exhaust fan, not a smoke purge fan. Exhaust fan on roof of the jail is actually one of four exhaust fans in the, that serve the kitchen. And you will see, you can see, hopefully, there's a piece of flex conduit here that we have a break in the conduit. This is actually the replacement hose here that you're seeing on the roof, laying the ramp. But this is an example of the items that the state had flagged on the 10th referencing their action letter that they wanted addressed in the next 30 days. And all of those items have been addressed. And unless that work is done, you can't really with the facility staff. So that's the first item. Second item, power shift overload in the main control room. So this is kind of the hub of the jail. And this is where the video monitors are. When they have, there are currently about 60 some cameras in the facility that state have monitored. And one of the things that the state had flagged is the backup power supply in the main control room. It failed, honestly, I don't, I don't recall when that was. The UPS would be exactly, uninterrupted power supply is not a element that facility maintains. So I do not recall it went down, they hurt or whatever, along those cases. But when that unit had gone down, again, this was the hub of the jail. The detention facility staff had staff had plugged some of the monitors, PCs into the power supply, I'll show you a picture up here in a second, and the state wanted that UPS replaced, which at the time it did, the state had secured the replacement, and needed to reconnect it, so that's why this is highlighting, you know, some responsibility from detention facility staff, and some support needed from facility maintenance in order to provide the power to the unit that was procured by detention facility. This is a photo here, again, the video, and I'm sorry it's small, but better off sight than I have, you can see a power supply here that has multiple cords plugged into, and the state wanted that addressed, there's actually a series of plugs underneath that desk that are fed by UPS, I mentioned that uninterrupted power supply, that was reconnected by facility maintenance staff on the 19th for use to plug in all this equipment, that work, at least to activate, the backup UPS was completed by facility maintenance staff on the 19th of December, in the late 18th, UPS was installed on the 19th. But this photo was taken just last week, the facility need plug, plug in, but again, the critical nature of the operations in the main control room, believe the intent, because I understand that detention facility staff has to do that, and we all power, government will make sure that if, if there were any a glitch, that they have time to address that, and that is something that detention facility staff will do. Item three, maintain three foot of clearance in front of all electrical panels, that is an item that falls under the purview of detention facility. Item four, verify test automatic gas shut-off equipment in the kitchen, elements in the kitchen, the equipment, the hood, all those elements historically, not to say that can't change, historically has been followed under the responsibility of detention facility, so that is, will further the operational item. Item five, smoke detector in door one, control room, medical area, this is an item that the state had flagged again on the 10th, and the thing that I will say to that is, this would be something to augment the current system that is in place, it's not replacing an existing feature, not replacing any existing functionality, while state was on-site, again, I mentioned, they went through the facility, suited up, they felt like these were two areas that could be improved, and they asked for additional detectors, smoke detectors to be installed, so they did not, they did in 1997, not installed in 1998, but they are asking for those elements, asking, recommending, you can choose the word, they are the regulators, when they ask, I know what, I know what that means, so that is something, we've had Simples Perma- come in, review that schedule work, and we are waiting on a proposal from them to install those devices in those two areas. Again, control room, the safety room, the additional officers who sit, that D is going to 123, and the medical area is obviously where nerves work. Item six, kitchen hood inspection, mentioned earlier, that falls under the purview of detention facility staff. Item seven, post current head of the fire bag regen routes, also not that time, following the purview of detention facility staff. Item eight, clearing and painting the hall shower in the first, so I mentioned the work that was done, I put this up in the green, again, cleaning, the studio services, that falls underneath the purview of the detention facility. And historically, painting in the facility has also fallen under the purview of the detention facility, detention facility staff, they have used inmates to do that work, as I reference doing the work that was done back in the sun, county purchase materials, where it was done with inmate labor, but with the significance that was placed on this item, the fact that we had inmates housed off-site, you familiar with the numbers that are already cited earlier today in terms of cost to the county, this is an item that the Public Utilities and Facility Department is assisting with, to try to get this work done as expeditiously as possible, from the outside of Denver, they have been working with it forward, as far as the painting, they were also obviously having to clean those showers in order to do that work, and once that work is done, once those paintbrushes are put up, paint dry, paintbrushes are put up, the cleaning, the ongoing maintenance and cleaning of that facility is not a responsibility heretofore of Public Utilities and Facility, and that is an item that falls under the purview of detention facility staff. But again, that is why I put that item in the room, so we both have some responsibilities, at least in the current environment that we're in, to get that item addressed. Item nine, ensure that all plumbing pictures in the proper working order, where inmates are housed, this will include hot water, cold water, and toilets flushed, there were references to that earlier, I will say most of the infrastructure review dates to the seventies, with portion of jails built in the 78, the early nineties, portion of jail built in 1991, 92, or the late nineties, a portion of jail built in 1998. I also mentioned in my earlier comments, this is not necessarily a hospitable environment, hospitable environment. I haven't met all the inmates over at the facility, I will say I've spent more time in the facility than I ever thought I would have when I joined the county in February 2019, but I can say with a high degree of confidence, I have yet to meet an inmate that wants to be there. Well, in the exception, maybe one of the, I understand is a pretty flyer, and females actually don't, but they don't want to be there, and naturally, the infrastructure of the jail suits quite a bit of abuse, but it also had a, so there are ongoing issues with plumbing in the jail, there will always be ongoing issues, we could build a new facility three years from now, which is maybe how long it would take, 30 months, if we could really accelerate it, and I'm relatively confident that shortly after we cut the ribbon, we'll have a look over for something plumbing related, and that's not to say that we could not upgrade the picture in the jail, if that is the desire or the recommendation from the New York Department, I do not think we could have enough drains in the jail, I think operational staff, operational staff will tell you, flooding in the dorm is an ongoing issue, and you'd be hard pressed to install enough pool drain in the jail, but again, we could build a new facility, we could start the day and cut the ribbon 30, 36 months from now, I'm relatively confident, we've had plumbing issues, and we would have issues with drainage, but could there be going in the facility? Absolutely, we're not going to tell you that, that it cannot be there. That will always be an element that facility maintenance will need to address, it will always be there, always has been there, and I anticipate it always will be there. So that pretty much speaks to item nine and 10, so these are the items that need to be done in the next 30 days. All these items highlighted in yellow, two of the four have been done, again, we're waiting on the foot from Simples Perma- installed as just additional smoke detectors, one in the medical area, and then there was another detector that they asked to be relocated a little bit farther away from the HBAC supply then, they had some concern that that may compromise, called the proximity, and so that we can relocate, we're waiting for that to go from Simples Perma-, and then there was a contractor on-site, as we speak, they were here this weekend, I spoke with them yesterday, at the county on-site, I spoke with them yesterday, they are working on getting those showers painted, again, as we speak, and have some pictures of that work. So here's some of the ongoing work, this is, I believe this photo was taken in dorm two, and what you're seeing in this picture is defensive work done, again, I mentioned most of the jail, you'll find three primary elements in the jail, you will find concrete, you will find reinforced center block wall, and you will find stairs. Doors typically going to be concrete, here you see tile in the shower, walls going to be reinforced, center block, maybe some brick masonry, and doors are going to be steel, casing around doors are going to be steel, pumps are going to be steel, but those are the three main structural elements you're going to find in the jail. But what you'll see here is the tile coat at the base of the shower have been damaged over time, detention facility staff have removed that due to concerns about safety, inmates possibly using pieces of that tile as a weapon, but the drought behind the tile had not been removed, state has some concerns that that may present a challenge in terms of ongoing maintenance at the jail, so that had been removed mechanically, repaired with drought, that ground is cured, once cured, it will be painted. You will see that, that the walls had been painted back in the summer, it will stick to the evidence that year, but they will be repainted, some were repainted last week, or maybe they should be repainted this week. Other four photos, I believe this is in a lockdown dorm I referred to, this is the rear shower, I will say, and this is obviously not a very impressive photo on the left, not to say it may be looking a lot better, but this photo was actually taken after some work had been done by the contractor, removed any loose paint in the shower, so that it could be primed and repaired, you will see some of that by tile coat that I mentioned, this is also being removed, again, this is, it says an after photo, that is, that is the dorm is, has an impromptu, this is, work is in progress. Another photo, the joint shower, basically there's two of these showers in the rear, there'll be ridges, and then there are three showers up front, that's as they exist, they don't work, really, to any degree has been done to hide one of those three showers, so five showers in that one. Still a little off late. Doors four or five, this is a portion of jail built in the early nineties, 1992, these are the four photos, there's current work ongoing within this dorm, you can see that here, this was, photo was taken after the bunks were removed, but again, you'll see some of those same structural elements, reinforced center block wall, concrete wall with a pipe here, see if it's still bunks, I will say the HBAC supply had returns, what you see is another lower portion of jail, for whatever reason, I can't tell you why, at the time, was built behind some plaster wall, maybe not the best material to use in a detention facility environment, but it's existed that way since the early nineties, and so that's what you see, the primary, concrete, center block, steel. This is the shower in that area, there were some stainless steel panels that were added to the shower, I'm not exactly sure when that was added by detention facility staff at some point, those shades and pictures were added, been removed in order to make repairs to the building. This is some impromptu work, you can see walls been painted, this floor floor's been painted, this is the shower area, you have a five floor, you have five sinks, ceiling's been painted, wall's been painted, we've got a contractor coming through some work on the floor in the shower, floor's yet to be painted, this is work that's been completed in the last two weeks. Other examples of work that is underway, I mentioned earlier that typically doors and door locks have been an item that the facility has coordinated with an outside contractor that specializes in this work, the sheriff's office and also the representatives from the Department of Health and Human Services have had some concerns about these exterior doors, these are the doors that inmates would pass through, the doors 1, 2, and 3 to access that recreation yard, work is underway, to further reinforce these doors, there's not really any sense, my conversation with state, my understanding of law, that the structural tape of these doors has been compromised, but it's something that inmates has continued to work on, and just to deter that activity, wanted to further reinforce those doors, I will show you the pictures of some work that's been done there. You can't see much here, but you can see the lock, this is the lock that you put key in, if you were on manual, it could be up remotely, and you can see some damage here right around the casing, this is door one, this is door two, you also see some of the metal has been moved around the casing in door two, this is door three, again, you'll see a little bit of damage right there, but the mechanism itself is well inside the casing. But in order to further reinforce that door, to curb that activity, we, we offer the staff in, coordinating with the outside metal factory, cash and shop to come on-site and further reinforce that door, to be, typically, this is work that an outside specialty contractor, George's detention, gives the vendor, to my knowledge, that we, detention facility have normally worked with, but we've arranged a local mechanical fash shop to come in, and you can see the work that was done, they've reinforced the entire runner of the door casing, and then add some additional reinforcement around this area to deter any activity to try even attempt to access the lock from that end on that door. The work has, to my knowledge, been completed in doors two to three, those are the dorms that are currently second, and ideally, what we begin today on door one, where there are permanent twenty inmates going to be housed, that is some of the work, again, it's perfect progress. The final item I want to share with you, I gave you a copy of this document, when I arrived in February 29th, and quickly the panel came to me, that we had some challenges, as it likes to understand, really what was going on with the facility maintenance, Public Intelligence Facility, I should say, and what elements were coordinated by the detention facility, so this was an effort to articulate which items that detention facility staff to be responsible for, and which items that facility maintenance staff to be responsible for. In saying that, I also recognize that this may change over time, certainly it may change as a result of the current situation that we find, as I already mentioned, we're doing some work that normally we do not coordinate for that very reason, but in June of this year, prepared this document, shared with the staff at the detention facility, and this is kind of, this is our guideline, in terms of what, what is responsible for, what detention facility staff is responsible for, and if anything is not clear, we can talk about it. Just want to share that with you, small print, I know it'll be tough for the public to read, that's why I'm giving you a document, but you will see some of the items that are referenced in this document, in terms of items that facility maintenance staff took to perform, I'll just tell you a few of it, which you may find helpful. First, annual building conditions, that for this facility is a little bit different in that we have all the site fund, Department of Health and Human Services, we allow help from them, and that is all, anything related to the condition of building, so certainly that is not something that would be, as far as completing assessment, responsibility detention facility staff had to follow under the purview of facility maintenance, again, but with a lot of help from the folks in Raleigh, the fellows, again, they are the regulators, they enforce, it's referred to the memo requirements, those are the requirements that were established by the state legislature, codified in general statutes, and those items that the inspector are looking at when they come down to the facility, not to say we can't exceed those departments, we certainly can, in some cases we do, those are the memo requirements. You will see further on, on that first section, items handled by facility maintenance, again, kind of routine things, I always think of our responsibility at the jail, loosen alley, almost to the landlord, and push to the staff and inmates on the tents, so we're kind of handling those items that the landlord handles, those big, bigger items, HBAC system, plumbing systems, the building, envelope, et cetera, but again, there are some caveats to that, I mentioned locks, door, security glass, coordinated by detention facility staff, but this is just kind of enumerated somehow as a rehandling. Relamping involve change outs, probably some of that's historically been handled by detention facility staff, kind of looking at the repair and quickly, cleaning, repairs, roofs and doubers, coordination of the services if needed, probably should take that out of what I mentioned earlier, that is something that detention facility staff handles, typically use trustees for, talk about other physical plant items, parking lots, speaking of all the other areas, in kind of major structural components. Before to the next page, again, other items, preventative maintenance on a footprint, but specific footprint, kitchen footprint, HBAC system, smoke, fire alarm, sprinkler system, reverse the generator, elevators and dumpsters, and also inspection of roof, indoor carpentry, plumbing, and electrical maintenance, handled by facility maintenance staff. Third bullet, any corrective maintenance needed, except as outlined under below, but there are the records, as you see, to some items, and again, this is back in June, calling some of the staffing issues at the jail, that landscape has changed a little bit, but at the time, there was a detention officer on the dorm who handled a lot of those minor items in the jail, which have both changed out, all security-related items, but facility maintenance staff has become one of the, some of the items just out of necessity. But again, to share this, we can give some context about items that we handle internally, with facility maintenance versus those items that detention facility staff handle. We provide 24-hour, day-to-day, weekly emergency on-call service, we dispatched one of our employees just yesterday to deal with, you'd probably be surprised by this, a plumbing issue at the jail, there was concern about hot water in one of the showers in dorm one, there are five showers in that dorm, we were required to have three operation showers based on the red shed, we had five, there was concern about hot water, we turned the water off until we could respond today, and I believe some leaky valve is in detention, and we also turned the water off in room six and room three, just going in outside. We provide 24-hour, day-to-day, seven-day, weekly responsive assistance to the jail for those items that fall within our stated responsibility. The ramps are roofing there, roofing, given item, again, larger structural elements, falls under the purview of the facility staff. Next section we get to is other services, so just call out a couple of items, maintenance personnel, if that's what you need, should consult, again, there's some things that come up, maybe questions about detention facility staff, main assistance, we stand ready to assist the staff at the jail, any way that we can, so that is- can, so that is articulated here. And then you will see that we also offer assistance to deal with outside vendors and coordinate inborns that they may receive to do that, so that's needed. Next item we address is items that typically not papers, these will be items that will fall under the purview of detention facility staff for the sheriff's office. I was, if you have any items, and if you have any items, just a little lacking, and I've got to take my glasses off, really. First is items covered by the sheriff, so back to God, cost of repair replacement of items damaged, prevent items that inmates, that's not to say we do not help prepare the items, but we have had situations plumbing related, where maybe an inmate has decided that he didn't need his blanket anymore, and he wanted it passed through the plumbing system. And the plumbing system is not designed to flush a blanket. So if that is the case, and a plumber has to come out, we'll assist with that, we'll coordinate with a plumber, but typically that the cost of that work will be paid for by detention facility, work will be coordinated by detention facility staff. Building renovation, expansion, modification, again, that's really just articulated here, not to say that my, I have a role, that this is related to facility services, what kind of our building maintenance staff handles. Building type of office furniture, including shelves, bookcases, et cetera, delivery of office supplies, not that's been an issue at the jail, but we have, felt we need to clarify that with some other departments, so we live in the document. Work related to coordination, transport, and tier of fresh shred, another issue, not many issues in the jail, but we retain that, of the head of, another document. But again, that's just an idea, some of the elements that are not facility maintenance related. Other items? I did not. Last three items, coordination pathways removed, backup power systems, or other UPS, I mentioned that early related equipment, and we are responsible for the emergency generator, other equipment inside the facility that may be needed for other items in the jail. We will assist if we need to connect UPS, but that is not something that falls under the purview. And any systems associated with or related to operational elements and monitoring, control, or processing inmate, that is not something that falls under the purview of facility maintenance staff. Again, I want to, again, say this is a living document, it can change over time, and we've already kind of changed our responsibility in some areas that I was sat in at the jail, but that's where we started in June of 2019. So with all that said, we come towards the end of our presentation. A couple items I want to share with the recommendations that I have for our staff of removing for the Wicca jail, three items. First, based on the expression we received, items that we flagged, we will be looking to work with the staff at detention facility, the name of the jail administrator, that's why it's going to be in writing, that would involve developing checklists, use the conjunction with monthly walk-throughs. So in other ways, we look partners with detention facility staff, we would jointly conduct our own inspection, state may come, again, I'm telling them a minimum two times a year, and they come more frequently than that. But that does not conclude us jointly walking through the facility again. Historically, we have relied on the detention facility staff or management or jail administrator to identify items during the routine walk-throughs to enter those work orders into the facility duty. And facility duty is just a software application that we track work order, and then our staff will address them. This way, we would work together, we still certainly hope to receive those reports from the routine walk-throughs, but we would on our own commission a monthly walk-through and get it together, flag items to aid detention. Second item, and this is replaced with state tests, is expect those smoke purge fans and gas control related to the smoke removal system or not related. Have seen this reference to the smoke purge fans being a suppression system, and it may be a minor clarification, but it is not a suppression system. A suppression would be to put the fire out, the smoke purge fan or to remove smoke from the facility should there be a fire, and should that system be activated. We have to test those monthly, so that we have a high degree of certainty that if they were needed, that they would respond appropriately. And finally, this is something here before has not been done, really the first time we've done, the third one then, is to commission an annual inspection of the smoke purge system. You may remember I showed your picture earlier, showed the fire panel in the main control room, and not pointing out that it would be the judge that fire panel is the control panel for smoke purge fan. Interestingly enough, that system is also installed by Semplex for that. We are working with them to try to arrange on an annual basis to have them come in and conduct an inspection on that system, so that we have an item from someone who has the expertise to certify that system, that it is operating as it is. So that is the third item that we intend to report you after work, some challenging[1770.75]